Good afternoon, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started. There's going to... So we'll go ahead and get started. First order of business is roll call.
Ms. Bernard. Mr. Furman. Dr. Hand.
Here.
Mr. Lansman. Ms. Newman. Mr. Cowan. Ms. Root.
Here.
Dr. Taub.
Here.
Mr. Torres. And, I believe... And Ms. Naomi Dyer.
Okay, thank you. Sheila?
At this point, you don't have a quorum.
Oh, we don't... Oh, okay. So we have to wait?
Um, we can introduce our new board member, Ms. Sarah May.
Great.
She's an active board member starting tonight.
Oh, wonderful.
So...
Hello, Sarah. Would you like to introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about you?
Um, my name is Sarah. I have a daughter who has cerebral palsy, schizophrenia, and hydrocephalus. Uh, we have extensive background in trying to navigate the, um, community mental health network within Oakland County. Um, we've been Oakland County residents my entire life and her entire life. She's eighteen, so we're currently transitioning over to adult programming. Um, and I am very interested in the mental health in Oakland County. I have a lot of friends who are suffering, and I thought, what better way for me to
I'm actually gonna call you into roll call, too, 'cause I didn't do that. Ms. May?
Here.
Does that impact quorum? Okay, so we do have it. Okay. Well, welcome, Sarah. We're happy to have you. Okay, so then we will move on to public comment. And there is no public comment in the online chat this evening, nor is there anyone present, but we do have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting for public comment, and we welcome public comment. Um, if anyone wants to put their public comment in the chat, we can address that at the end of the meeting as well. Great, thank you. Okay, and we will move on to approval of the agenda. Um, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move.
Thank you. Supported by Malkaya. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to business operations, um, starting with the January financial review, um, which will be presented by our CFO, Anya.
Good afternoon, everybody. Making sure you can all hear me okay? Okay, good. All right, we have January, um, trending charts up above here, and so what you're looking at is the revenue trend. And, uh, if you remember last month, I mentioned, um, the holidays and that, um, tend to, uh, mess with the revenue coming in a little bit. Um, so you can see that kinda still happening in January where it's a bit of a spike, but you can see November and December were a bit low, but that's just... Some of those dates get messy, um, just because of how they fall with the holidays and things. Um, but I do expect that to flatten out a bit, um, um, over the next couple of months when we get through some of those major holidays. So, jumping to the next chart, this is our eligible trend. Um, again, still significantly higher than last year, and last year was higher than most of our prior years. So, we're gonna continue to see that happen, um, due to the emergency order, um, which is, uh, good news for us because we're paid on the number of eligible, so we'll continue to see increased revenue due to the eligibility trend. Next slide, please. So, this is our, um, uh, asset comparison, and we're looking at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, which you all know is unaudited at this point, but, um, that compared to January thirty-first, and what you can see is since that time, um, we've had an increase in cash and investments, um, a decrease in receivables, roughly flat for other assets, and then capital assets just goes down slightly with depreciation each month. The primary driver there on that increase in cash and investments is related to the, um, uh, CCBHC, which is the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. Yes. Um, so that's the primary driver of the significant increase in revenue, is that that was a new, um, initiative that, that started flowing through us this fiscal year, so that does have a pretty significant increase on our revenue, and so we'll get to that a little later as well with the providers and things like that. So, um, just be aware that we will start to see that, um, having an impact this fiscal year. I think probably going forward, we may start to separate that out as a separate revenue category, um, because it does have its own rules and regulations and how the money works as far as cost settlement with the state, so I think for, for better understanding, it might make sense to pull that out separately so you guys can see the difference. Um, so now we're looking at liabilities, so this is again compared to the end of fiscal year twenty-one. So you can see our liabilities are down since then, which is to be expected, so year-end we would typically do all the accruals and stuff for anything that hasn't been paid out but has been incurred, and so since that time period, we've paid most of, a lot of that out. Due to state is roughly flat, as well as the other, um, employee payables and long-term So, our net, um, assets here, again, compared to the end of the fiscal year are roughly flat. I'd say that's a difference of about four million dollars, which for us is about roughly flat. Um, total liabilities have gone down, so what that means is our net position has gone So, this is the, um, year-over-year. Um, I don't know why it says November thirtieth, twenty-twenty versus January. It's actually January to January. It's a year-over-year, so that, that heading is incorrect. Um, so what you can see here is the in... From this time last year, you can see that increase in revenue, Medicaid revenue. So that, again, is gonna be, um, specifically related to not only the eligible increase, but also that, um, CCBHC revenue. So that's really the primary drivers from last year to this year. You can see general fund is roughly the same, county funds is always the same, and then all others roughly the same as well. Um, again, the, the label up there at the top is incorrect. This is January over January, so you can see administration is slightly up, which we would expect just from the, um, the additional positions we've added in the last year. What you can see also here is a significant increase in provider network. So this is what we would expect. So, if you recall at the beginning, when we talked about the initial budget, we did, we did several different things this year, one of which was increased salaries for clinical staff. We increased direct care wages to fifteen dollars an hour. Um, in December, we started an eighteen dollar an hour pilot for direct care staff, so a number of those things are starting to come into play here. And as we go through the year, you're also gonna see that CCBHC expense kick in as well. So you'll start to see expenses going up quite a bit compared to last year, all within what we budgeted, but, um, if we're comparing year-over-year, you're gonna see the difference. So grants and all other are roughly flat.
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
My watch thinks I'm talking to her, sorry. Okay, should be able to move on. Okay, so net income, again, this is year-over-year. So this is total revenue from, um, January of last year to January of this year. Again, it's up a few million dollars primarily due to those eligible and the CCBHC revenue. Total expenses are up as well, um, just as we just talked about. So net income, actually, has gone down slightly comparatively just because those expenses have increased, um, substantially since last year. But again, all things we planned and, and, and were aware of. This is the list of the top fifteen providers paid in the month, and then the next sheet just has their descriptions, and with that, I can take any questions.
Uh, the increase in wages and salaries, uh, we have been hearing about this fifteen dollars an hour increase for the direct care professionals. Outside of that, what is the increase in those wages? I mean, the rest of the service providers?
So what we did was, um, we adjusted the licensed clinical staff. We adjusted the salaries for, for, for those individuals working with, throughout the provider network, because we were hearing from multiple providers that the market had driven the wages up for those particular positions, so we did adjust that by, I think, about fifteen thousand dollars, um, a year for each, each clinical staff. To, to be able to meet the market demand and so they could still retire.
Yeah, of, of course, that's understandable, but I just wanted to know that piece of the increase in compensation.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anya? I didn't know that watches came in genders.
Uh, yeah, I talked to her. Her name is, you know, Siri. She, she talks back. She, she, she's very handy. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Anya. Okay, uh, next, we are going to move on to, um, a few different contractual obligations that will need to be discussed. Um, we have four of them that we will be, uh, reviewing, and first is the Rosati contract, and Ms. Ali is going to talk about that.
Hi, this is Kalana Ali, Chief Legal Officer for OCHN. Um, before you, I have a request, uh, for the approval of an extension of, um, the Rosati Schultz contract, which is for legal services. Uh, they have been under contract with us, um, for, or since twenty thirteen. Right now, we're requesting an additional fifteen thousand dollars be added to their, um, existing contract and an extension through, uh, nine thirty twenty twenty-three. Uh, this will allow for us to, um, continue services as needed, on an as-needed basis as we continue to work through the, um, procurement process for legal services formally.
Are there any questions regarding this contract?
Um, Kalana, I thought that with bringing you aboard as Chief Legal Officer would lower our... The amount we were paying our firm that we have on retainer, but you're asking for additional money. Can you explain that?
So, all items or all things cannot be done in-house, so there are some things that require more specialized services, so if there's an employment matter, things like that. Um, this is a considerable amount lower than previous years have been and from there on out, since I've started. Uh, from fiscal year twenty-one, that contract was actually cut in half from there, and prior to that, that contract was cut in half from there, so it's actually is decreasing on an annual basis.
Are there any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Newman. They can't hear you on this side, sorry.
Sorry about that. I just want a clarification on the extension. Does it go through this year or twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three, uh, we're asking. Uh, we don't utilize your services that often, however, as we ramp up for the formal procurement of legal services, um, we want the opportunity to make sure that there is no gap if there is any coverage as needed, so we're asking for an extension period through twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kalana. So we will be, um, asking to recommend, uh, to move this contractual obligation to the board for full approval at the next board meeting. Um, there's only two members of business ops here, but you would be able to add on to that, so we should be okay to vote for that? We don't have quorum, okay.
So how many are in the committee normally?
Five, and there's only two of us here.
Plus I, according to the bylaws, I'm an ad hoc member.
I'm gonna defer to Kalana for that.
From a voting perspective, and I'll defer to Mr. Hooper, I don't believe that you're allowed to vote on the matter.
So then I'm...
Or to count toward quorum, I'm sorry, excuse me. To count for quorum as the business ops, you're not allowed to count for that as a board chair.
Am I allowed to vote as a board chair?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Hooper. I do not believe so.
He's online. Mr. Hooper.
Mr. Hooper, are you able to, uh, comment on that? You're on mute, if you can hear us.
According to our old bylaws, I'm s... We don't have the new ones yet, the, the chairman of the board is a de facto member of both committees, so de facto member should be able to count it for quorum and be able to vote in case of a tie or... I, I actually have the bylaws.
So I'm gonna defer to Robert's rules. Um, that, that was where, um, I got that, so from Robert's rules, you're not allowed to count for quorum as a board chair, but if, if we're saying that the bylaws will control, I'm not sure that that language is expressly in the, in the bylaws.
Could, could we just, um, knowing that Mr. Torres is going to be coming in at around five o'clock, could we review the contractual obligations first and then, or push them back and wait for him to arrive so that you can...
As, as a ad hoc member, can I make a motion that we table this one until later in the meeting?
Mm-hmm. And then I have a question, um, being that he would be added in as a ad hoc member, you still might not have quorum, 'cause then it would be six people.
How would it then be six people if I'm not counted as a quorum? There's still only five on their official committee.
You should not be counted toward quorum under Robert's rules of order.
Okay, well, Mr. Lansman did make a motion to table this until later. Do we have a second? I don't believe so.
I'm making that motion on behalf of the agenda. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Chubb. Okay, so why don't we move on to the website update? Oh, we have to... Sorry.
Ask for discussion if there's not enough.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? No? Okay, uh, all in favor of tabling the contractual obligations till later in the meeting?
And this would be for full board, correct?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Okay, motion passes. Uh, okay, Ms. Bunchu.
All right. Good evening, um, for our new board member. I am Diana Bunchu, and I'm the Chief Information Officer here at OCHN, so welcome. Um, today, what I am bringing to you is our website. Um, this is a project that we have been working on, um, for the last several months. One of the things that we did was we had sought, um, feedback on what people liked and didn't like about our current website. We had people rank other websites that they liked, and we gave those to our vendor. So what the process has been was at first, they gave us a design, and as you'll see this, and we go through it, it's visually different than our current website, and at the same time, not so different where people are going to think that they landed in the wrong place. Um, the other thing that you're going to notice as we go through this today is that things don't look done, they may not make sense, they look unfinished, and that is because we are in iterations of this website. So it was turned over to us last week, some changes were made, more changes will be made this week, this week, and this week. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that just because it may look a certain way today does not mean that's what it's going to look like when it launches, uh, the first week of April. Excuse me. All right, so as I mentioned, um, they've gave us this design, and, um, I'm gonna talk about the first page, the homepage first. And as we go through, we have our carousel pictures that we are able to update and put information on. We also have over here where someone can choose a language, and it will use, I believe it's Google, to translate the pages for them. And the other thing that, when we talked about the website, what we really tried to do was take a look at what the website traffic was talking, you know, telling us, as well as what do we think one of the most important things is? And one of that is when someone comes to our website and if they are seeking services, that it is front and center and easy for them. So that is why you see here that we have information on if you're in crisis and the one to connect to services. Those will also be repeated on all the pages throughout the website. Website traffic also told us that people come to get, and feedback also, that they want to get information on mental health diagnoses or developmental disability diagnoses, conditions, so on and so forth. So what we will have here is a list of the most common so that people can come and get Next, as I come down, and we are really excited about we're gonna have the new calendar rain functionality, um, that will look a little different than what we have on our current website, and we are able to categorize, all categorize all the events. So if I want to see only training events, I can come and click on training, and it will only show me training events, board meetings, so on and so forth. Then as I scroll down, um, we can get more information on news, press releases. We actually talked today that there's some repetitions, so we know we're gonna have some changes there. Links to our satisfaction survey, how to sign up for newsletters, contact us, and then at the bottom, and this is also that something new, is we will have a footer, and what a footer is, is it will appear on the bottom of every single page of the website, so we are able to pick things to put down here. Um, these actually need to be updated, 'cause they are not correct. Um, are those things that are super common and that people would be looking for, so for example, careers is almost in every single website footer that you will see. So that's some of the changes that you will also be seeing. We have up here, our ability to be able to search our website, then of course, up at top, you can get to our social media pages, and then at the top of every single page, and you will see this whole block right here is going to, um, repeat from page to page with our phone number for coming ground, nine-one-one, and for access. Up here is where we have been spending a lot of time and trying to think about the organization of the website. So this is going to have different categories than what we had previously. We have, um, an about us, which is very common, most websites are going to have that. And with this new website, what we have is the ability to do what's called a mega menu. So, oops, there we go, so as we see when I pop here, it's just not board information and committees, but we can also see what those sub-menu items are underneath to be able to help people find the information that they're looking for quickly. When I was in grad school, I had to take a class, um, on website design, and I was supposed to read a book called Don't Make Me Think. But do you really need to read a book that says, like, "Don't make me think"? And it's really, and John and I know that you've talked about this, you know, really making sure that things are intuitive and that people don't have to think about where they are. So we've been trying to think about, if someone's coming to our website, what would make it the easiest way to find them? So if I wanted to get information on our Board of Director, we see our board. We have our, what they call these breadcrumbs going across the top of the pages, so then that way you can easily get back to where you were. But you also see these follow what was up here in our menu, so it makes it nice and consistent for people as they're going through our website. The next menu item, and this is, you know, as I said, and I can't say it enough, quite the work in progress, is thinking about, once again, what is something that connects with people, and it's a how-do-I? How do I find a provider? How do I contact customer services? How do I get help, submit information? So this will continue to grow over the next few weeks, and we will be seeking feedback, and then of course, even after the website goes live, I'm sure we'll get additional feedback, and then we can adjust things to make sure that, um, it's easy for folks to use. We have, um, a person-served page. This was, uh, feedback that came back very, um, that was very important to folks who are on the CAC and other people that we serve. So here will be all of the things that are important to him, to them, I should say. Uh, then we have resources, and this is another place where, you know, for what we do, we thought resources made a sense, 'cause you might be looking for suicide prevention resources, diagnosis resources, services, all of those other types of things, so those will be there, or they are there, this just needs reorganization. And then we have recipient rights. Are there any questions?
How long do we have to ask for edits after the website goes live?
So we will be able to make any edits ourselves, yes, so that's what's really nice, is the way that this company did it was they take and they brought us the design, and then we pay for the software behind the scenes that will allow, whether it's communications or another department, to be able to make those changes. So almost everything we've seen, except for the design elements, all the menus, all the pages, all those types of things, we have the ability to update those on our own. That's a great question. All right, well, thank you very much for your time, and we are excited to have this launch in a few weeks.
All right, thank you, Diana. Hey, moving on, we are going to move into policy management, and I am going to defer to Ms. Newman.
Thank you, Remy. First, we're having our quarterly updates from the SUD department with our new Director And Chief Clinical Officer.
Good afternoon, or evening, everyone. I am here just for a few minutes, just to give you a little bit of, uh, introduction to our new SUD director. We're very happy to have Ms. Kristy Schmiggy joining us as our new SUD director, and I wanna give you a little bit of information about her. Uh, she, uh, has undergrad in, uh, clinical, clinical, clinical community psychology. Sorry when your glasses fog up and you got your mask on. Also, a master's in public health. Um, she also holds some credentials, uh, for SUD, Certified Alcohol and Drug Counselor, as well as, uh, Michigan Non-Reciprocal Prevention Certification. She has lots of previous experience here. I'm gonna give you a little bit of history about that. Um, she has been an SUD counselor, supervisor, and director for Insight and Flint, but additionally, she's had eighteen years as an SUD director for Genesee County, when it was just the Genesee County Health Department, and then half those years were part of the Genesee County CMH, or Genesee Health System, PIHP, including integrated care with an emphasis on, uh, senior, with, I'm sorry, with, uh, integrated care emphasis. She has been the Senior Director at Gateway, which was an MCNP in Detroit Wayne, and most recently, uh, she has been the Director of Integrated Care and CCBHC Project Director for Hagera Health. So she comes to us there, as well as some brief stints, uh, in interim leadership over crisis and access. She also has maintained many leadership roles, um, in work groups and committees, locally and statewide. All of these things, we believe, will, uh, contributing to her, uh, OCHN cross-departmental efforts and teams. We believe she'll be really good at integrating our care and supporting our SUD network. She wants you to know that she's committed to collaboration, building and sustaining relationships, and community partners, but, uh, one of the things that was, uh, exciting about her, or she was excited about, is the opportunity to serve the population in which she lives. She says seven years here in Oakland County, and she is thrilled to be representing Oakland County, uh, again, where she lives. So please help me in welcoming Ms. Kristy Schmiggy.
Hello, thank you, everyone, for the warm welcome. I could not be more delighted to be here. Our Substance, uh, Prevention and Treatment Services overview, our... Our staffing, and I could not have inherited a more delightful, hard-working set of staff. We have the one director, a manager, one prevention coordinator, a lead clinical analyst, two clinical analysts, one service network analyst, and we're in the process of hiring a health home analyst. We have one screening, brief intervention, referral to treatment, which we call ESPT for short, individual that works at Honor Community Health on our behalf. And a delightful support specialist. Next slide. The quarterly initiative update that I will provide, we have 11 grants currently. I'm highlighting two of them here. And the first is a Management of COVID-19 Grant to Expand Opioid and Stimulant Treatment and Prevention Services. And then we also have a Pilot Ambulatory Withdrawal Management Service project. The COVID-19 Grant Management, the annual plan goal, the what and the why for that is to ensure that our persons served have access to substance use disorder services by implementing new programs that help decrease the likelihood of contracting COVID-19 virus. So with this particular project, we establish, are establishing a Substance Use Disorder Health Home in Oakland County. It is slated to launch on April 1st, so we're very excited about that. It's right around the corner. And the impact and outcomes that we're seeking is to select contracted providers. We have already done that. There are four of them. Sacred Heart, Easter Seals, Catholic Charities, and Oakland Family Services. And they will provide integrated, person-centered, comprehensive care to eligible individuals to address complex behavioral and physical health conditions. That's really the focus of health homes. Sometimes it confuses people because it sounds like that's a location because of the word "home," but it's really just a comprehensive set of services provided by a team of professionals. And we are, again, moving forward to implementation very soon. Next slide, okay. The Health Home Overview. Again, it's a team of professionals that includes the services for comprehensive care management, care coordination, meaning between behavioral and physical health care, because we know that the individuals we serve experience not just the behavioral health conditions that we typically treat, but also physical, co-occurring physical health conditions. And it's important for us to help coordinate the care with primary care physicians on the outside, specialists, and other community supports and services. So we also help to promote positive health, stop smoking, nutrition, weight management, et cetera. And we support comprehensive transitional care to other services in the community or to other levels of care within our system, offer individual and family support, and referral to community and social support services. The team typically includes a nurse, peer, recovery coaches, or support specialists, community health workers, and requires there to be a physician and psychiatric consultation as well. The budget and funding for the program comes from the COVID Substance Use and Gambling Services Grant, and it's $592,945, so not quite $600,000. Do you have any questions?
I forgot, I'm running inside of the meeting. Kristy, on the providers, you named four?
Yes.
Who were they again, please?
It was Sacred Heart, Easter Seals, Catholic Charities, and Oakland Family Services.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional?
Are there any other questions for Ms. Schmiggy?
Our other grant to report on then is Ambulatory Withdrawal Management Services. And this is a pilot ambulatory withdrawal management service. We are providing, it's considered the least restrictive level of receiving withdrawal management services. So it's done on an outpatient basis. Typically withdrawal management is in a residential level of care. Provides telehealth to individuals that want treatment in their home. And again, keep in mind that the focus was to reduce COVID transmission by having individuals be able to be treated in their homes. It is a safe withdrawal management process for opioids. It is contained within the American Society of Addiction Medicine, or ASAM, levels of care. And it has defined medical protocols where an individual has contact every day with either a physician, nurse, peer, or therapist. It's designed to be a five-to-10-day service, and then they will continue in care thereafter, hopefully. If the individual is still struggling in this ambulatory withdrawal management level of care, they will then be referred to a residential withdrawal management at a 3.7 ASAM level of care. The funding for, and again, my apologies, we're expected to launch this also April 1st, so right around the corner. We're very excited about that. And the impact and outcomes, we want to increase access to services by individuals being able to be treated in their homes. And we are moving quickly toward implementation. This provider is Sacred Heart in Madison Heights. The funding and budget information, Medicaid and Substance Use Disorder Block Grant, and all of these items are approved in the fiscal year '22 budget, and there are no additional costs required.
Yes, Mr. Maston.
Thank you. So on that particular program, it's a one-year pilot, so it goes April 1st to March 31st of next year?
That I would have to, my apologies for being extremely new, I don't know the answer to that question. Megan, our manager of Phillips, our manager of Substance Use Disorder Services is on. Megan, what is the answer to that question?
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. Megan Phillips, your manager of SUD Services. The Ambulatory Withdrawal Management Services, this will become a part of our regular array of services. So we are piloting it with the one provider right now, but we expect for this to continue into the following fiscal years as a part of our regular service array that we offer, since it's another way of providing the least restrictive level of care to an individual.
Okay, so essentially, it's state funding now till the end of this fiscal year?
Grant funding and some state funding.
That's, I assume, is through the state's MDHHS. Okay, and you said that it's a five-to-10-day where someone from, you said Sacred Heart, goes out to the person we serve?
No, it's through telehealth.
Oh, it's telehealth to their house, okay. It's a telehealth program. Okay. So that's why I was trying to figure out how, how we would carry on after that. So it's just face-to-face therapy to get them through the rough, the rough times. Okay. Interesting. All right, those were my questions.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms., oh, yes, Ms. Rowe?
For the COVID Substance Use and Gambling Services Grant, is that just for one year, or will we be able to reapply for that one?
All of these funds came through the state from the federal government. And like Megan said, we are planning to continue these services moving forward. And thank you so much, Megan.
Questions? I had just one. I noticed that this is only for opioids. Once we incorporate it into our regular service array, will it be expanded, say, to alcohol treatment as well, or will it only stay for opioids?
I will also defer to Megan on that one, but I believe, let me go back to the health home, because I should have commented that we are the only PHP in the state that is offering the Substance Use Disorder Health Home. Everyone else rolled out an opioid health home, but we asked for permission to expand that to more than just opioids so that we could treat individuals with other substance use disorders. So for that project, we were very specific about the fact that we recognized there are individuals other than people with opioid problems, and wanted to assure that we were able to provide that service, that comprehensive service, to people with all diagnoses. But this project is opioid-specific at this time. Megan, is there a plan to branch out with that one?
There have not been any discussions yet about branching out on that. I am sure that is something that can be discussed with alcohol use disorders. It is certainly, in terms of the withdrawal management, typically that is done in a residential setting due to the dangers of withdrawal from alcohol. Alcohol is the one substance a person can withdraw from, and without proper medical monitoring, they could die from. Opiate use disorders, that danger is not there and associated with it.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not hearing any. Thank you, Ms. Schmiggy. Welcome aboard.
Oh, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to meet all of you.
Next up, we have the Justice Team with Dr. Posios.
Good evening, everybody. For those that are new to the board, my name is Dr. Posios, and I'm Chief Medical Officer at Oakland Community Health Network. Since mid-February, the Justice Initiatives Team has been aligned under my purview, and so in lieu of us having a director, I'll be giving this evening's presentation. So the Justice Initiatives Department, our goal is to improve outcomes for individuals who encounter the criminal justice system as well as the juvenile justice system through cross-system collaboration and coordination. Our team consists of 12 staff members, and we're looking forward to onboarding a new staff member very shortly, either later this month or early next month. So for your review at your leisure, you should have two documents that were submitted. One is our quarterly report, as well as a Co-Response Crisis Outreach Program Quarterly I will be focusing on two initiatives that are highlighted in the quarterly report. One is the Co-Responder Model, and the other is the Mental Health Access and Juvenile Justice Diversion Initiative. Next slide, please. So what is the Co-Responder Initiative? I think that the board is familiar with this, but I wanted to talk this evening about expansion of our Co-Responder Initiative. So one of our annual plan goals is to increase systems implementation of diversion from initial contact with law enforcement or filed charges and into mental health, behavioral health, treatment and supports. So what are we doing and why are we doing it? Well, we are embedding an OCHN clinician to provide co-response and follow-up for citizens experiencing a mental health and behavioral health crisis at the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, and with the goal that they'll be serving Rochester Hills and Pontiac. And how are we doing this? Oakland County approves an inter-local agreement to commit to implementation and funding of this initiative. When are we doing it? Implementation will occur as soon as onboarding process has been completed for our social worker who's coming on board. As I said, we anticipate that this will happen either this month or next month. The impacts and outcomes that we're hoping to have, well, we anticipate improved connections to supports and services, more positive interactions with officers, and improved systems navigation. We hope to complete this goal soon. As I stated previously, we interviewed four candidates in January of this year. A provisional offer has been made, and we are awaiting background check completion. Next slide. So the second initiative that I wanted to highlight this evening is the Mental Health Access and Juvenile Justice Diversion Initiative. Our annual plan goal is to increase systems implementation of diversion from initial contact with law enforcement or filed charges and into mental health and behavioral health supports and services for youth. What are we doing and why are we doing it? Well, to maintain current project partners, explore expansion by continuing to offer early identification screening tools to assist with diverting at-risk youth. How are we doing this? Through networking with current and potential project partners, in other words, at resource fairs, presentations at associations, and training events. This is an ongoing endeavor. The impacts and outcomes that we hope to achieve include offering connection to community-based behavioral health services and avoiding potential interaction with the justice or assisting in diversion efforts. In terms of our impact and outcomes, we do have some preliminary results that are in the report. When you take a look at it, nearly 70% of children identified via the screening tool, completed the screening, and of those 70%, over 90% were referred to mental health services. The completion status of this initiative, so as of November 2021, the juvenile justice team has been receiving referrals from the prosecutor's office. This initiative was presented at the Association of Independent Michigan Schools. And schools are the overwhelming source of the referrals for this screening. Next slide, please. So with regard to budget and funding information for these and other initiatives at the Justice Initiatives Team, our funding comes from grants participating cities and county, general funds, as well as SUD funding. Next slide. I'm happy to entertain any questions that the board might have at this time.
Are there any questions for Dr. Posios? Yes, John Paul.
Thank you, Dr. Posio. One of my questions is with regard to the juvenile justice. You said November 2021, you guys began that process of taking referrals. And then you said a number of them come from the actual schools. Is that how you identify them, or is it also if they come into contact with police, as it would be like similar to adults, is there referrals made along that way too as well?
Yep. So the, as I said, the overwhelming majority, 60% of referrals come from schools, but we do have referrals from other sources. For example, 10% come from the truancy. For example, 10% come from the truancy department, just over 8% from circuit court, a small number from the prosecutor's office, and a sliver from self-referrals. And I assume that that would be from, you know, family.
Okay, and then going back to the Justice Initiative with regard to adults, I know you indicated that the idea is to divert them away once they make contact or they get connected with police officers and to work with the police. But one of the things, you know, I'd highlight too is that it may be good to also work with probation officers as well. Because sometimes, once they, if the case goes through and the police officer has moved through with the case and so has the court, the judges oftentimes are inclined to give them like a deferral or give them like a six-month provisionalary period where they'll throw out the case if you meet certain terms. But in many of those cases, a probation officer is actually assigned. And part of what the probation officer will do is they work on, you know, one is safety always, public safety is number one. You know, two is retribution for what you've done. But three is development. And so a lot of times, the probation officers will work with the individual to develop them, get them the services that they need that they may not have been aware of. But having them in the equation on those cases that actually do get adjudicated through the courts would be beneficial, because in many instances, when they are on probation, they're on it for three, six months. And then if they successfully meet terms, which could include, you know, you know, following through with services or other initiatives that may be required, the cases can then be dismissed. But oftentimes, one of the issues is that they don't follow through, because they don't have the support or they don't know what to do. So I think this is really good, you know, that you have that. But also working with the probation officers, I think, would be a good thing. So just to put that out there, speaking from the probation. But yeah, all right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, the coresponder model is something that we are very actively looking to expand. And so I will take your suggestion back to the group and discuss, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Poseos?
I have a question. Thank you, Dr. Poseo. My question is about the coresponder initiative. So that is, is that a follow-up? Or is it a telehealth encounter? Or how does that play out in real time?
So as of right now, it is a live, face-to-face encounter with a social worker. And Siri Sikora, who's our Justice Initiatives Manager, feel free to chime in. But yeah, it's a real-life person who is a social worker, who rides along with the police, is given referrals from the police to follow up. And, you know, one of the things that we have discussed internally, and this is certainly not ready for prime time, but we have discussed at a very basic level, you know, how we might be able to couple telehealth services with our coresponder. I can tell you the coresponder was interested in using her experience from her work, you know, on the ground, and give feedback on how that might work. You know, one of the things that I was wondering is if there are situations in which it would be helpful to have a psychiatrist or other prescribers, you know, input on the field. That would be one potential use of telehealth in conjunction with our coresponder.
So I have a follow-up. So if there are multiple events happening at the same time or within a short time in different geographical locations, how will that work then? Because we have only one coresponder.
Yep, yeah, it is a challenge. I have a, I think in the report, the coresponder report, it lists the number of encounters that we had from October 1st to December 31st. And the total was 132 encounters. And so, yes, you know, I think that for one social worker, it certainly saturates their capacity. And so I think what you're alluding to, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, how can we, you know, multiply the power of our team, you know, through telehealth potentially? And I think it's something, you know, that we can discuss internally and consider, certainly. But, you know, we're also looking at, hopefully, getting more funding to hire additional social workers to become additional coresponders. But yes, there is a, there's a demand here. And so the question is, how do we ensure adequate supply to meet the demand? Siri, is there anything that you'd like to add to that?
No, I was just wondering about, could we access some of the training programs or the universities, Wayne State University or Oakland University, that have programs? And we could perhaps make it or suggest or somehow implement it as part of their curriculum or clinical training, where we don't have to have a full-fledged certified social worker, that even the students or people doing their clinical rotations or technicians even could be part of that? Just to expand that reach in many crises.
Yeah, that's a great question and a great suggestion. I think across the board, even beyond Justice Initiatives, we're looking at how to engage training programs to increase our, for lack of a better word, manpower to address some of these challenges. But it's interesting that you mentioned this specifically with regard to the coresponder program. We did recently have interest from a student. I forgot, I think it was a social work student, but don't hold me to that. But somebody who was interested in a coresponder experience to fulfill a requirement for part of their training program. So I think the question there, of course, is, you know, do we... Aside from the, you know, traditional vetting of programs and establishing relationships with the training programs, you know, here, I think there would be a unique question about liability that we would have to address. And certainly, you know, that would be something our chief legal officer would weigh in on. But yes, I think that you raise legitimate points and things that we are in the process of exploring.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to add, the coresponder program was also a proposal we have submitted to Oakland County to utilize funding to. So we could expand on that program. And I believe we were approved, and I don't have the exact number of people that were included in that proposal, but that is something that we are looking to expand very soon.
Any other questions? In relation to your comment, Dana, my question was, would this be in addition to the original coresponder program? We had already started with, what is it, Birmingham? And so the clinician that's working with them would be an additional?
Sorry, additional clinicians would be able to do the same role with the police officers.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the additional clinician, as I understand it, and Siri, again, feel free to chime in. They would be through Oakland County sheriffs, and they would be serving Pontiac and Rochester Hills. But in addition to that expansion, we are also actively engaging the City of Troy, Southfield, and West Bloomfield to hopefully expand our coresponder presence in those departments.
Thank you, Dr. Poseo.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions for the doctor? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Remy, did you want to go back to business ops at this time? Or did you want to finish out with policy? It's whatever your pleasure is.
Well, I realize that I miscounted before. And even with Mr. Torres here, we still don't actually have quorum.
We don't?
Okay.
So with that, I just have a question. Would we be able to make a motion to move the contractual obligations to my report during the board meeting? And then have the business ops vote on presenting it?
I don't think you can make, I don't think you can make the recommendation, but you can, we can put it on the agenda for the board meeting. And we'll just have to have that discussion then.
I'm going to defer to Klana on that. I mean, we could have it for board approval, is that what you're saying, at the board meeting?
Yes, we just won't have a business ops vote of confidence for it, one way or another.
Right now, we don't have a quorum for business ops, so I don't know if we can hold that part of the meeting. I'm going to defer to Klana.
Right, that's what I think I just said is it, you can't, we can't vote on tonight, but we can still have it on the board meeting agenda to cover those contracts. What we can't have at this point is a recommendation coming out of the business ops, because we don't have a quorum. However, that shouldn't stop us from still voting on activity at the board meeting.
That is correct. At the beginning of the, this is Bernard Cooper, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
At the beginning of the meeting, did we in fact have a quorum?
We had a quorum for board in general, but not specifically for business ops. Okay, if that helps.
Okay, so if we did not have a quorum for business ops, then we cannot take, we cannot take a motion from the floor or vote on any matter. What matters, as you suggested, can be placed on the agenda for the full board to vote on. There would just be no recommendation from business ops.
Not much difference than what we were doing before we did this process a few months ago. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
I'm sorry. Next, we have Sentinel Events, presentation with Mr. Hamilton.
Ready? Okay, good evening. Nice to see everyone again. My name's Adam Hamilton, I'm the clinical director here at O C H N. And I am going to present to you on our Sentinel Review Committee. This is our annual report. I should mention that this report was prepared with the assistance of Wendy Schiller. She's our manager of quality management. And Amy Heinzelman, who's the clinical supervisor, working on my team with me. Okay, I'm going to start off by giving you some quick definitions of things that we review and different types of events that are reported to us. This becomes a little bit important later when we get into talking more about the work of the Sentinel Event Review Committee, which I will call the C I R C going forward. So an incident, when we are talking about incident reporting, is an event that disrupts or adversely affects the normal routine, course of treatment, or care of an individual or the functioning of a program. This would include things, these are examples, this is not the exclusive list, but things like a recipient's death, if there's suspected abuse, someone is a harm to themselves or a harm to others, medication errors, things along those lines. A risk event is an event that occurs when somebody is placed at risk for poor outcomes of service delivery. This could be actions taken by individuals that cause harms to themselves or others, or two or more unscheduled admissions to a medical hospital within a 12-month period. Critical incidents are occurrences such as deaths by suicide or non-suicide deaths, emergency medical treatment or hospitalization due to an injury or medication error. Arrests are also considered critical events. And it's critical events in particular that the clinical analysts, who are members of the C I R C, they review all of those to see if they need to be presented to the C I R C committee. Under our contract with M D H H S, we have what's called immediately reportable events. So these are things that were required by contract to report immediately to the department. These could be deaths because of staff member action or inaction. So an individual dies as a result of a staff doing something or not doing something that they should have done. Relocation of individuals due to the license of a home or a facility being suspended or revoked. Any occurrence that requires the relocation of a service site. This actually is not a terribly common thing, but occasionally, like if the furnace breaks at a home and people have to be temporarily relocated because there's no heat, things like that. We have to report those types of things to the department immediately. And then if someone is convicted of a crime at the P I H P or provider staff level for an offense that's related to the duties of that organization. A sentinel event is an unexpected occurrence involving death or serious physical or psychological injury or risk thereof. The phrase "risk thereof" in this case includes any process variation for which a recurrence would carry a significant chance of a serious adverse outcome. So when the C I R C reviews critical incidents, the determination that's made is whether or not that incident meets criteria to be considered a sentinel event. And then we have what's called a root cause analysis. And this is the process that's initiated when an event is determined by the C I R C to be sentinel. I'll talk more about this later, so I won't say a lot about it now. The root cause analysis is the process that we engage to try to get to the bottom of what happened, to identify the root causes of that event, and then enact changes to make sure that it is not going to happen again. You can go ahead and advance, please. So this slide here kind of goes over all of the individuals who comprise the C I R C committee. I participate in it as the clinical director. The clinical analyst and clinical supervisor from my team participate in it. We have clinical representation from our S U D team as well. The administrative and special projects coordinator, who's on my team, operates in the role as the C I R C coordinator. So she's reviewing things as they're coming in, distributing them to people who need to do the reviews. She participates in the meeting, tracks things for us. She coordinates the immediately reportable events going to the department. That's a big, that's actually a big and important role that she has doing that for us. Our Director of Rights and Advocacy participates. Dr. Poseos, our chief medical officer, participates. And then we have periodically participation from our quality management team. So they have a quality analyst who is working with what's called risk events. They come, they present some data, we review things with them. And then occasionally, the manager of quality management will participate as well. We are required, as part of our P I H P contract with M D H H S, to review all incident reports to determine if an incident meets the criteria to be considered a sentinel event. reports to determine if an incident meets the criteria to be considered a Sentinel event. The CERC plays a crucial role in making these determinations. And as I mentioned, the staff listed on this slide make up the CERC committee. The CERC meets once per week. And in advance of the meeting to prepare, members of the committee will review critical incidents. All deaths are reviewed by the CERC committee. Um, a, a clinical analyst with a, all of them have a master's level credential as behavioral health, health professional, cannot make some determinations about whether or not an evental, uh, an event is Sentinel because a lot of times they involve medical treatment. So that's why we have Dr. Poseos on the committee. He participates and is able to review those for us. Uh, so in, in advance, the clinical analysts do an in-depth analysis of the events that may or may not be reviewed, those that need to be reviewed by the CERC, including those that would really require the eye of Dr. Poseos to make a determination. A presentation is prepared, brought to the CERC, and then we review them there. And again, if a, in if event, if an event is considered Sentinel, then we initiate the root cause analysis process. You can go ahead and advance, please. Uh, I covered most of this already. Uh, in addition to the things I described already, we do meet quarterly to review data. We look for trends, we look for opportunities to um make system level changes. Uh, when we identify trends, uh, we have to, we have to meet regularly to satisfy our requirements to MDHHS per contract. And again, when those root cause analyses are completed, that's, that's a process that we start, we engage the providers, they actually complete a plan, those come back to us and the CERC also reviews um those plans to determine if, if we feel they're adequate to address the root cause of um the event. Go ahead and advance, please. Okay. Um, so this present, this slide presents the total number of incident reports that were reported to OCHN going back to fiscal year 2017. It looks to me, when I look at this, you know, that eighteen to nineteen thousand IRs per year is kind of our average. We obviously have one year that's somewhat of an outlier there. When I dug into that a little bit, some, some things that came to light were, that was the year that we uh resumed direct oversight of the specialized residential contracts. We were doing a lot of regular meeting with those providers, providing a lot of technical assistance and training on completing IRs. We think that probably contributed to um the uptick to some degree. The downward trend we feel is probably attributable to the pandemic. Many uh vocational sites were not operating. In clinic services for, for autism services, for example, were basically suspended for a good portion of time. And it's in the delivery of those services where we tend to see some incidents, um, leading to incident reporting happening. So with that, with the absence of those things happening, we, we think that probably led to a, a downtick in the numbers in FY '20 and '21. You can go ahead and advance, please. I mentioned immediately reportable events, and just to review, these are uh events such as the death of a, of a person because of staff member action or inaction, um relocation due to licensing suspension or revocation, anytime people have to be temporarily, temporarily relocated um from a service site. And if, the other thing is if we have a change to our provider network composition, that's a thing that we have to report. If we, if a major provider were to close, for example, we have to report that to the department immediately. You can see, we don't have a lot of these, it's on average about one per month, and only the two categories, suicide death and investigated death, are really represented in the numbers for fiscal year '21. This does not really represent a significant change, you can go ahead and advance, please, from fiscal year '20 when we had only fourteen. So we're kind of holding steady around that rate. You can advance, please. A risk event, um, this, this slide shows the per month average of different types of risk events. And just for reminder, a risk event takes place, or is an event that takes place when an individual is likely to experience a poor outcome. Actions taken by individuals that cause harms to themselves may be an example of a risk event. Uh, and again, the, the two or more unscheduled admissions to a medical hospi- hospital within a 12-month period would um meet the criteria to be considered a risk event. Uh, the data here is fairly consistent with what we saw in fiscal year '20 as well, down slightly. We had a sixteen point nine uh risk event per month average in fiscal year '20, so we're down to fifteen per month here, not a significant change. You can advance, please. And this just does a by-quarter breakout, and again, fairly consistent across quarters when compared to the previous fiscal year. The next slide is um just a different view of some of the same data. It's probably worth mentioning here that our OCHN quality management staff, when a risk event is reported, they notify the provider network staff. Um, and, and then they are engaged in addressing causal factors of the risk event. Causal factors for any risk event must be identified and submitted to OCHN within thirty calendar days by the provider. And uh this slide again just shows kind of the breakout of the different, the totals of different types of risk events for fiscal year '21. So something we're monitoring closely, working with our providers on. So we'll talk a little bit now about root cause analysis and again, really the, the operations of the CERC relative to making determinations about Sentinel events and root cause analysis. When an event is determined to be Sentinel by the CERC committee, as I mentioned, the OCHN clinical analysts and other members of the CERC will devise questions to help the provider who's involved identify the root cause of the event. You know, some questions might, examples of questions might include, what is your organizational policy or procedure that support you adhering to a particular clinical procedure or protocol? How does your organization ensure coordination of care happens in a particular situation? Things like this. So we try to help them home in on what we saw as problematic related to the event occurring, give them some guiding questions, and then they can start their analysis at that point. Um, the CERC coordinator coordinates with the provider agency, lets them know a root cause analysis is being requested, gives them the questions to help begin the process with them. Typically, the QI staff at the provider agencies that are receiving these. And um, you know, then they start the process within their own organization. The, the, the root cause analysis and all its components are due back to us within thirty days. And the key components of a root cause analysis are an action plan that identifies what changes really need to be implemented to prevent a re- recurrence of the event. We look for the plan to talk about if an, if there is training, education, for example, that need to happen with the, the staff at the provider. Who's going to carry out the plan? Who, which members of the provider's organization are going to be responsible for actually implementing the plan? How will they measure the effectiveness of that plan? What is the standard or what is the goal or the target that they are reaching for in terms of measuring to determine if they met that goal? And um they have to give themselves some target dates for when they're going to achieve these things. So once they complete this plan, it's given back to the CERC, we review. Again, if we feel that it's not adequate or if it needs more work, we'll send it back, request revisions, and then once we have something finalized, they go forward, they implement the plan um in an effort to prevent a recurrence of the event that was deemed Sentinel. So now we have some data on critical incidents, you can go ahead and advance, please. So this gives a breakdown of the number of critical incidents in fiscal year '21. Um, again, just for review, a critical incident could be a, a death by suicide or a non-suicide death, emergency medical treatment or hospitalization due to injury or medication error, arrests, for example. So any, all of these things would be considered critical incidents, and, and the members of the CERC um rev- review these and make determinations about uh whether, whether or not they actually need to come forward and be presented at the CERC committee. Again, anything that appears like it's going to have some implications as far as medical care, we want to get those in front of Dr. Poseos to review. Um, you can go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. So in fiscal year '21, there was a total of seven hundred and thirteen of these that were reviewed by the CERC. This breaks it out by quarter. And then on the next slide, it gives you a breakdown of the number of those critical incidents that were determined to meet criteria for Sentinel events. So these were reviewed by the CERC, the CERC agrees, these are Sentinel, and RCA gets requested, and then that process happens that I described a moment ago. So this, again, fairly consistent uh in terms of numbers that we had from the previous fiscal year. I don't think I have the exact number from the previous fiscal year. At the tip of my fingers here. But I believe it was just slightly more than this. So fairly, fairly stable, fairly steady as far as number of Sentinel events go. And the next slide starts to speak to some of the activities that we do related to looking at data. So, you know, occasionally, monthly, um, during the CERC, sometimes more often if necessary, uh, we actually will look for trends, try to identify opportunities to close system gaps, try to identify opportunities to um address uh a trend that might be uh something that we've noticed that has led to several events and, or several, several incident reports that we think we can uh make some improvements. So one, one way that we do this is we have a dashboard that displays data for individuals who have ten or more incident reports in, in a thirty-day period. It's actually individuals or a core provider or a direct service provider. So we can, we can identify, is there something going on with a particular provider, with a particular individual? And is that an opportunity for us to intervene? Sometimes we find out there's, there's really nothing significant we can do. One, one thing that will generate a lot of incident reports very quickly is somebody refusing their medication. That doesn't necessarily equal a crisis right away, but if somebody has medication three or four times a day and they, that, that will generate an incident report at every medication refusal, we can get ten incident reports pretty quickly that way. And um we can, you know, of course, check to see are people following up appropriately with this, is the provider aware? But other times, there's a trend that we'll identify and we'll want to take some action. Maybe we recognize a need for some, some training in the network, something like that, um, a gap in a protocol we have that needs to be rectified. So it's, it's useful for us to look into that and try to be proactive to the extent possible. Little bit of an overview of how this impacts people. Obviously, what, the ultimate goal here is to really try to make sure that we're making continuous improvements and reducing the probability of events recurring. Where we can identify trends or make changes to, to policy, practice, protocol, to be proactive in preventing incidents from occurring in the first place, we certainly want to do that. And again, I mentioned that sometimes we identify gaps in service delivery. We don't have a um, a, a staff trained to do this particular thing. We need to find um more training that we can bring forward and help support uh staff in delivering this particular type of service. So these are crucial outcomes of the CERC, and we are seeking to always kind of do what we can to be as proactive as possible and try to improve the system through closing gaps and improving practice. Go ahead and advance. Um, this slide details some of the relevant policy and procedure. We have a Sentinel event policy that we abide by, that's where a lot of the information from uh this presentation comes from. Uh, we have procedures that the CERC follows in terms of its processes for reviewing in critical incidents, procedures around the RCAs as I described. We review all of these things up and update them annually to make sure that we're remaining in compliance with our MDHHS contract and their policy as that evolves, and to make sure that we're really, again, doing the best we can to be proactive and um get the best uh policy, procedure, protocol out there for the provider network to follow too, so that uh we are reducing the chance of, of events recurring in the future. When our quality management, our Director of Quality Management, Marquita, does the CLPIP, and you saw, Marquita and I presented on this a few weeks ago, we include data about the operations of the CERC committee and the activities of the CERC committee in the CLPIP as well. You can go ahead and advance. In terms of uh, you know, the, you know, the impact or the, the, the role of OCHN staff, it's a significant amount of time and effort to do this, um, but we feel it's very important to do, and it really is a good opportunity for us to stay in front of, um, to the best of our ability to do so, trends that are impacting service delivery out in the system. We um really do see it as a very, a vital and important role of the clinical team and the other teams that contribute to it at OCHN. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them now.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hamilton? I had just one, just going back to uh the suicide death. Were there any increase that you could see like during the pandemic? You said the numbers seem to be fairly sturdy.
Yeah, it was, it, to, it, there wasn't really a perceptible change from the previous fiscal year to, to fiscal year '21. Yeah, fairly, fairly steady overall. You know, it's, that, that's a thing, again, that we monitor closely because those have to be reported to the department as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No other questions? Okay, thank you, Adam.
Sure.
So I feel that I have to ask, but can you summarize the difference between this group and then like the recipient rights investigators? Cause I, to me, I feel like so much overlap, right?
Well, so a recipient's rights investigation is really much, it's, it's a much more involved going out, actually interviewing people who were involved in, in the event itself, whereas this is more of a retrospective review of records and really looking specifically at the clinical services that were provided. And there's, there's not um a preconceived, there, there's, you know, there's not a, there's not a com- a complaint that generated these. There's not uh necessarily a problem in, in, in any case here. It's really just, a lot of times, the nature of what happened warrants us taking a look at it as opposed to, you know, a rights violation. It may be, it's generally going to be the case that there's a, there's a concern that was brought forward. So it, so it's, it's different to that degree. There is sometimes overlap where the ORR is, is looking at similar or the same event, and because of the nature of it, we also, as the CERC, have a responsibility to look at it.
Any other questions? Thanks, Adam.
Yeah, thank you.
Next on the agendas, other business, Jonathan.
There we go. Uh, the only thing I can tell you is uh I still haven't seen the senators vote yes or no on that, on the bills, so if you have not reached out to your local senator, please do so, hoping to get them to vote no. Well, they didn't last Thursday. They got it through on Wednesday. That means that you could try to reach them tomorrow before they vote if it's on the agenda. It wasn't last Thursday, and that meant they didn't have enough votes. Let's keep calling to prevent them from having enough votes.
Yeah. Yes, we'll move on to events outreach.
Yes, we'll move on to events outreach.
Good evening. Welcome to our new board members. I am going to give you our outreach and awareness update for March. I do want to remind the board that this is a moving target as far as information. So by the time I give it to Sheila, we've already added two or three more events, so it is a high-level snapshot, some of the work we're doing. Of course, we want to start out with our ongoing efforts in Oxford Schools, there are partnerships with our providers. The number of requests for onsite clinicians has decreased to four to six on average. Our clinical team, led by Adam and Kyle Glass, I was working with the school district and the community to move forward in its recovery planning. So I know they even have a meeting tomorrow just in helping identify students who may have additional needs or ongoing work that needs to take place in the community. So we continue to be very much face forward and active in supporting them and whatever their needs may be as they are identified. Next, we have the needs assessment. This is a multi-team program. I put a lot of information on here about the needs assessment because I know it's of particular interest to the board, but I do want the board to know that it is not replacing our ongoing work and outreach, it's just additional. Some of the things that I wanted to note, we have a number of in-person presentations. I know I've talked about this before. We have several people lined up, including Dana, myself, Frances Carly, and Suzanne, to go to different clubhouses, drop-in sites, and then, of course, we will be meeting with nine different work groups internally to talk about the needs assessment. This is a snapshot of our initial outreach efforts. Our initial email of the needs assessment went to 6,000 people. We will be posting social media site messaging and doing some boosting every week. Patches and online newsletter that I think it services six to seven communities in Oakland County. Commonwealth is an online events information service, that resource that we use within our network and other nonprofit organizations. The Health Division has agreed to release it on their listserv, which is several hundred thousand people. On Friday, we mailed hard copies to all of our service sites and then some additional sites. What we did was put five copies for persons served, five hard copies for direct service professionals, and then we included an envelope with return address and self-addressed stamped envelope. One of the things I'll say, when we first started doing that, we might get 20 or 30 back. We now usually get between 100 and 150, which doesn't sound like a lot, but considering the work and everything they have going on, that number grows every year. The other thing we did this year is I was processing some of the things that Christina talked about, the QR code and through. And, and we do know when we're face-to-face with the people we serve, they like the hard copies. But as I was thinking about it, it occurred to me in those settings, if we add a QR code onto the document or in a form and ask the direct support professionals who are helping them, it might be easier for them to help them complete the needs assessment using the phone or a scan. So we did include a QR code in all of those hard copies and asked people to keep it on hand in that service setting so as different staff came in and out of the building or in and out of the home, that they could help people in terms of completing the survey, but also completing it themselves. We also included the information about the needs assessment in our stepping stone. It was supposed to be mailed Friday, but we learned today that our printer had a system malfunction. Some of their equipment had broke down on Friday, so they, they called and said that they are going to have it out by this Friday. So that will be mailed to 14,000 people who we serve. Now, we included the QR code in the newsletter as well. So I'm hoping just these, these little tweaks we make will help improve the response. I know that is of interest and concern to the board. Some of the other things that we're doing, thankfully, we are being invited to more and more events in the community. So we will be bringing the needs assessment with us wherever we go, and then we'll leave flyers behind. We're adding links to it into our chats for different meetings, all of those things. So fingers crossed, we only first started sending it out the end of February. I expect those next two weeks to be an influx of responses. Right now, we have about 150 responses online, but I have about 50 hard copies sitting on my desk. So we're at around 200 responses within, in our first week. That's without the newsletter being sent out, and I do know the hard copies will start getting sent to those service sites. Probably this week, they'll start to receive that information. Is there, do you have any questions about the needs assessment? I'm just going to move forward to some of the events. We, Dana was on a panel for Kedema Mind Matters event last Thursday. It was exceptional. We had, there were over 300 people. She and I had a conversation after, and I was talking to her about the increase in requests we're getting for our staff to participate in different panels and events and to share in their expertise. And, you know, it's really very complimentary to everything we have, we do. So we can put out press releases, flyers, we can be in a lot of different places, but when your leaders are identified for experts and content experts, it really helps establish credibility, and it is an important piece of that awareness and branding. Those things get me happy, she knows that, and so I do want to share that with the board. We also met with Senator Ruth Johnson, Senator Jim Runstedt, last week to talk about the privacy bills. I, I think the meetings went well. Mr. Runstedt did say to us, it's, it's interesting when you kind of take out the middlemen, I think is what he was trying to say, and you have those one-on-one conversations, that the dialogue he was having with us was more impactful than anything he's heard in a couple months. And some of that, I always say, you really can't fake genuine, and when you're in those meetings, and I think they hear our voices and our passion and really the knowledge we have of what these bills mean to the people we serve, it resonates with them on a different level, and so they usually will ask for some follow-up information. I am optimistic that we are going to be able to make that impact and hopefully keep the bills from coming out of the Senate, you know, based on what views and information people share with our legislators. The Abilities Awareness Event is tomorrow. I know I mentioned it last month, the link is in your packet. It's only an hour long. If you have an opportunity, I really encourage you to log in. We will be recognizing two ability champions. I must have liked the Kedema Minds Matters so much because it's up there twice. I saw that and I kind of, I chuckled. We did join also, and I'm talking about, we join things pretty quickly. We received a request to participate in the Tri-County Ukrainian Mental Health Support Event. Dr. Posios represented OCHN, and he was extraordinary. He was on WWJ, he was on Channel 4, but again, you just really sensed his understanding of what this event and the impact it can have on people and what really we need to do, support each other and to be mindful of each other's mental health during these times, especially people of Ukrainian descent. So very thankful for that information, and I was very appreciative of his willingness to participate. The next thing I have is just a list of some of the press releases. This list changes all the time as well. We've already have three or four things we talked about and decided on to do this week, but we will be doing press releases about ability awareness, mental health. National Drug and Alcohol Fact Awareness Week is toward the end of the month. We are, I think I mentioned last meeting, participating with a group out of Farmington, the DECA Group, that Mr. Hooper had introduced us to. So the, the team, their team and our team is working together, but the teenagers have to come up with this spring forward. So in recognition of spring, they're going to do some hashtags and then ask people to share it, to spring it forward about being drug and alcohol free. So they're pretty excited about that. We have some ideas of how to get them some recognition locally and in the media. We were also sending out, or also sent out a press release, March of Self-Harm Awareness Month. We are working on a press release specific to helping people support themselves, their mental health during a crisis, an international crisis, because it does touch people and it does increase anxiety and fear, fears. We're looking at doing a press release about World Down Syndrome Day. And then on Friday, we had a meeting at 3:00 and decided we're going to do a webinar at the end of the month at Tri-County that we're going to host, specific to drug and alcohol fact awareness. So we'll team up with our substance use team here and work and coordinate with Wayne County and McComb, but then we'll host the event. I think that's all I have. That is all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Really? That's all you have? Seemed like a lot.
That's all we have going on, guys. Thanks. Have a nice night.
Oh, I'm sorry, jump on.
Yeah, I just had a comment. Yeah, I really appreciate your comment about, you know, the experts in OCHN being on panels and things. I've noticed that too, and I think that's really awesome. Because oftentimes, we talk about, I think way back to 2007, and I first learned about community mental health and mental health authority. I didn't really know what it was. I read up on it and figured out, you know, how do I get on this board? And then now we're Oakland County Health Network, and it's not as well-known, and Dana, I've talked about this like it is in Wayne County. So it's, you kind of have to explain it to people, but it's, I've just with the billboards and, you know, the social media and, you know, you know, panels now and all these kinds of things, and us being, you know, in the news and stuff, and, you know, Oxford, and, and now unfortunately what's happening international, internationally. But I think it's good that people know who we are because we are the resource, you know, and services. And oftentimes, when I got that 30 seconds to explain it to somebody, they're like, oh, you know, and, and then they start talking about substance use, mental health, whatever it would be, and then, you know, veterans, you know, how, how can we connect them with services, those kinds of things. So, so I just wanted to make that comment, and I think that's really a positive, awesome thing that I've seen over the past year or so, us just really being out there, and kudos to you guys, you know, the team and the leadership.
Any other comments? Thank you, Christine. That was a lot. It's great. Okay, so we will move on to our second opportunity for public comment.
And there is no additional public comment in the online forum.
Okay, thank you. Any additional board member comments? Okay, so with that, I think we will move on to adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, seconded by Mr. Torres. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.